You got seven o'clock? Go ahead and call this regular meeting for June twenty seventh for the Troutdale City Council to order.
Counselor Rittman?
Here.
Counselor Caswell?
Here.
Counselor One?
Present.
Counselor White?
Here.
Counselor Wittrin? Counselor Glance?
Present.
Mayor Lauer?
Here. Thank you. Do we have any agenda updates, Ray?
No, Mayor, they are as written tonight.
All right, sounds good. We'll move on to agenda item number two, public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer in limited matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. Council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Public comment is open. Let's go to Zoom first. If anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, go ahead and let's raise our hands and I will call on you accordingly. Okay, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers wishes to make public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and approach the table, state your name and city of residence to the record. All right, not seeing anybody. I'm gonna go ahead and press public comment. We'll move on to agenda item number three, a motion to approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget and report on Mount Hood Cable Regulation Committee and Metro East. Mr. Norm Thomas, John Lugton, Seth Ring, Kristi Mansett, and Rebecca Gibbons from Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission and Metro East. Just Mr. Norm Thomas.
I think the other ones are online.
Oh, yep, I see them now.
Give me a second to get organized here and I'll be good to go.
Absolutely. Kristi and Kristi, I see Kristi, I see Rebecca.
Yeah, Rebecca's in the bottom right corner if you want to understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to come before you tonight. And hello to councilors and staff, some of which I already I know. I need to pull this over a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit closer might help a little bit.
Okay, and it's active, right?
Yep, red means hot.
Okay, well, I can't see it with the button in the way.
I know, I can't either. Mine was off.
All right, well, let's start out with the, but all deals, I'll start out with my presentation. And then we'll move into a presentation by our agency that we had due to the evaluation of our TechSmart Impact Program, their report, which we gave away somewhere in the neighborhood of five million dollars to help support schools, especially in the technology area. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You're not Commissioners here, so my name is Norm Thomas, your appointed representative on the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission. I'm here today to seek your approval for the MH CRC twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget and to highlight to you on some of the, some of the, some of the MH CRC's planned activities for the coming year. As a reminder, the MH CRC, which I'd rather just call the Commission if that's all right with you guys.
Absolutely.
Is a regional commission representing the cities of Fairview, Gresham, Portland, most important, Troutdale, Wood Village, and Long Island County. The Commission was formed in nineteen ninety-two through an intergovernmental agreement to provide oversight, enforcement, and public benefits responsibility under the cable services franchise. The Commission is a group of eight volunteers appointed by the cities and the county. The cities appoint, well, Portland appoints three members and each of the other jurisdictions appoint one member each. And we are staffed through a service, staff service agreement with the city of Portland. The jurisdictions currently have cable television franchise agreements with Zipline Fiber, which serves East County and Comcast, which serves the countywide. Over the years, the Commission has monitored the changing technologies and public policy landscape to support community needs for local authority over the public rights way and compensation for its use by for-profit cable companies. A consumer watchdog to assist subscribers with billing and service issues and local solutions for addressing local representation and media and digital equity issues. Each year, we present the Commission's adopted budget to each jurisdiction for approval. This is also an opportunity to share with you in more detail the services we provide, provided over the past year and to answer any questions you might, you may have. The Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget at our meeting on May twenty-second. In your meeting packet, you have the proposed budget, our annual report, and goals for next year. And the TechSmart Initiative Impact Report, which you will hear more about from Kristi in just a few minutes. I'll take the next few minutes to provide an overview of the proposed budget and some of our planned activities for the coming year. The proposed budget of the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four budget is on page five of the budget document. Nearly all of the MH CRC funds, the resources are funded and collected by the cable companies and the expenditures are dispersed by those, to those funds, to the members, to the jurisdictions, member jurisdictions. The community media providers, Metro East and Open Signal, and community grant receptions, recipients. Long-term trends continue to reflect a slow decline in the number of cable subscribers as more and more people receive their media content in other ways. The franchise fees collected are calculated based on a percentage of gross profit, gross profit revenues, which is five percent. So drops subscriber counts continue to be slightly offset by the annual rate increases implemented by the providers. After funding Metro East and the Commission's operating budget, the city trial deal is projected, projected to receive about forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. And maybe there's some sense added in there. From the franchise fees next year, the projection is less, is about five thousand less than last year. Through the, though the intergovernmental agreement allows each jurisdiction, each jurisdiction agrees to fund a portion of the MHCR's operating budget. Couldn't staple it together today. The city's allocation to the Commission's operating budget for twenty-three, twenty-four is twenty-one thousand, six hundred and six dollars. Combined with the contributions from the other jurisdictions, the total operating budget is five hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. The proposed, the proposed budget includes a slight, slight increase in staffing this year from four FTE to four point nine. We are using the caro funds from this fiscal year due to staff vacancies to support an additional full-time employee. Our staffs are tasked with conducting cable franchise agreements and come lines, fielding consumer complaints, overseeing the Commission meetings and finances, and implementing, implementing public benefit programs, such as the grant programs to support technology uses in schools, community nonprofit and other, and our two community media centers, Metro East Community Media in Gresham and Open Signal in Portland. Funding also supports, support limited professional services such as legal counsel, advocacy work, and participation in, in national organizations. In the, in the coming year, we are kicking off a strategic planning process for member jurisdictions to engage with us to develop a strategy for addressing evolving public policy and community needs. We will be reaching out to you, out to each jurisdiction in the coming months to have these discussions. With the resources collected through the franchise, Commission provides capital and operating support to Metro East Community Media and Open Signal, two vital community-based organizations that work to ensure that our communities have access to media technology, training, and diverse local engaging video content on the cable system. Metro East is on, they also broadcast the Troutdale City, City Meetings. As, and we provide capital grants to schools, libraries, public agencies, and community nonprofits to support access to technology and training that promotes civic engagement, equity, and economic opportunity. The Commission anticipates awarding two million dollars in community technology grants in the coming year. The summary of grants awarded last year is included in the annual report, included in your meeting packet. Today, I'd like to, like to focus on the funding initiative that can, that the Commission recently wrapped up. You may recall that since two thousand fourteen, we have been funding innovative classroom technology grants through a strategic partnership with each of the six school districts in the county. The grants were designed to use technology and innovative teaching and learning techniques to achieve better academic outcomes for students. The TechSmart Initiative invested nearly sixteen million dollars, I was a little off, sixteen million dollars since its inception. It was cut short of its goal, its goal to invest a total of nineteen million dollars due to federal law change under the previous administration that took effect in two thousand nineteen. The Commission, in partnership with outside professional evaluation team, has spent the last couple of years closing out the projects and working with the districts to assess the impact and to share what we've learned. Here today was Kristi Mansett, Mansett, the Pacific Research and Evaluation to share the findings. Kristi, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm gonna, I have a few slides to share with you all, so I'm gonna share my screen and just let me know if there's any problem. Sorry. There we go. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Here's my presentation. So thank you for letting me come and share with you some of the ways of the funding from the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission has been supporting school districts over the last seven-year TechSmart Initiative. So as was mentioned, my company, Pacific Research and Evaluation, has been a research partner in this work throughout the entire grant process. And so we've had the opportunity to, to talk with the schools and look at student achievement data to see kind of the impact of this funding on, on the districts. So I'm just gonna give you guys some highlights of information. I know you guys have the full impact report that we put together in front of you that you can dig into a little bit more. But I'll just talk, talk about some of the things that I think have been, has been pretty interesting. So as we just heard, there was a, nearly sixteen million dollars in funds awarded and the real goal of these grants was to try to support districts in not only supplying the technology into the schools, but also really providing a professional development element to teachers to, to, to really see a change in instructional strategies that incorporate technology. So this looked a lot like several different types of devices and apps, but also different types of professional development models integrated into the classrooms, different coaches that were employed to support teachers and really trying to change their instruction using the technology. And I'll talk about a few of the ways that we saw that happen through our research, but six school districts were funded through the grants and nine total grants were awarded. So a couple of the districts, including David Douglas Reynolds, Gresham Barlow had two projects each for about three years each. So some of those were extension projects and some of them were completely different focused depending on the district. I wanted to highlight a couple of the things in this presentation today that I thought really stood out from the TechSmart grants and how this funding really allowed the districts to do things with technology that they really wouldn't have been able to do if this, this amount of funding wasn't provided to them. So the first thing is that it really allowed districts to take some big risks that they maybe wouldn't have taken if they didn't have this type of funding. They were able to try new technologies. They were able to try new instructional strategies and different PD formats using this funding. So there's a couple of examples here. I can focus on the second one, which was in Reynolds. They were really able to, one of the things that they did is they funded expensive technology like three D printers and short throw projectors for their math classrooms that really were engaging to the students, but also they tried some instructional models like a flipped classroom, which I don't know if you all are familiar with, but it's kind of a way that teachers are able to record themselves providing instruction. Students watch the lectures at home and then kind of have a little more hands-on facilitation from the teachers in the classroom. And some of the, the technology was able to really make that happen. We also wanted to highlight the fact that the TechSmart, it was very wonderful in preparing districts and schools that were receiving the funding for the pandemic. Nobody could have ever anticipated that that would happen and that, you know, all schools would eventually be using tech in the classroom. But we saw that students were more familiar with Google Classroom and CSO, which is a common app that was used in the districts during distance learning. We heard that students knew how to use their Chromebooks already. Teachers had established Google Classroom. They knew how to embed videos and links in their classroom content. And because they had a lot of this basic knowledge, they were able to really use more sophisticated tools during the pandemic. Also important to point out that students were able to easily log into devices, which although it seems like a straightforward task, it's kind of challenging for younger students, which kind of was an obstacle that had already been tackled by the time this TechSmart districts got to that point. I also just wanted to point out that TechSmart was really at the forefront of digital equity. There was an equity aspect of the TechSmart grants from the very beginning. A lot of districts focused on high-need schools. We also saw that digital access became a real priority during the pandemic. So I think that, that we heard that the pandemic really forced districts, you know, not just in our state, but across the country, to see that giving the students a device doesn't necessarily provide them access. And being prepared with devices really allowed the districts to focus more on access and making sure that hotspots could become available, really being creative about spending time on how to get students access. And that's pretty, it ties in well to my next point, which is just that we saw a lot about how technology in the classroom was really increasing equity for students because everybody was having access. But when the distance learning with the pandemic came across along, we did see a little bit of inequities, again, due to the, the access issue. I'll keep us moving. Just wanted to highlight a couple of cool student achievement findings that happened or that we saw in our research. I will say that we were pretty limited in being able to look at student achievement data mostly because students didn't take the state test during two of the key years of our, of the grant cycle due to the pandemic, but we were able to look at some descriptive achievement data. And this is another wonderful thing, I think, about the design of the TechSmart project from the MH CRC. They really asked districts to focus on some of the, they, they did a supportive, the all-hands-raised partnership, and there were twelve community-wide indicators that are part of, were part of that partnership. And so the districts had to really focus on one or more of them. Most of the TechSmart districts were either looking at kindergarten readiness, third grade reading outcomes, eighth grade math, ninth grade credit attainment, and graduation rates. My organization developed a quasi-experimental student achievement study for each district. Was able to somewhat execute that prior to the pandemic, but it didn't work so much after the pandemic due to the fact that my treatment, my control group all got the treatment during distance learning and, and so it was all washed out. But we saw some promising findings who were able to look at things in a different way. This actually just goes over those limitations. So I'll just focus on a couple of cool things that we saw. In the Reynolds School District, we were able to look at some promising results prior to the pandemic. So the first two cohorts, Reynolds focused on middle school math in their first grant and they, we saw that even by seventh grade, the first two TechSmart cohorts had earned a significantly higher number of math credits on average than their historical comparison groups. So we compared them to students historically. And that actually held up when we look at underserved student subgroups as well. So that was students of color, special education students, and English language learners. They also showed significantly higher math credit attainment than their historical comparison group. So that was a promising early finding in TechSmart. And it actually held up over time as well. And then I'll just highlight one more from Gresham Barlow. This is the first grant that Gresham Barlow implemented. So I tried to pretty much focus on things that happened prior to the pandemic because it was less messy. But you can see this is their first cohort of students in a TechSmart school compared to a non-TechSmart school. We matched by school. And the line graphs just show the percentage who are, of students who are meeting the reading benchmarks at first, second, and third grade. And you can see that the TechSmart cohort started slightly higher than the comparison and kind of stayed that way over the course of the, the project and in, in that gap kind of increased over time. And so the last thing I'll say is people always are asking from our research, what's next for education technology? Where can the money be spent next? Now that every school is kind of going one-to-one on devices, or a lot of them are. And when I talked to the districts about this, there was a lot of discussion around really reframing the traditional role of the teachers. So kind of going back to that example I gave you of the flipped classroom. So many were discussing the teachers as facilitators, being able to interact with students more, using the technology for other purposes to try to get more one-on-one with students. There was discussion around intentional use of applications. I think when, when, when the schools were first using apps during the pandemic, there was a lot of, let's use anything we can get our hands on. And now there's a lot more research and, and focus on deciding what is used. Along with that goes just ensuring that apps that are used and, and applications are really keeping student data private. And so there's a lot of work going on around that. And then just the continued maintenance and innovation is what I heard at the end. So I know that was really quick. I'm really appreciative of you all listening to what I learned during these seven years. This was amazing. I'm the biggest TechSmart cheerleader out there. I could talk for hours, but I know you don't have that much time. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kristi. Is there any questions for Kristi?
Yeah, any questions from the council?
All right.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Norm.
It turned out to be a far better program. You know, we came up with the idea that we wanted to see if there was some way to move the needle to help out students. And then we, you know, made a, made an allocation that let's take X amount of funds and move it forward to see if, to see if we can make this work. And the staff worked very closely with all the school districts. And the school districts, you know, put a lot of work into getting just everything ready to go and other, to actually use it and make it work. Unfortunately, it helped them out with the pandemic. Wasn't the plan, never was, don't want it to be. But it did help out because people are, a lot of teachers had gotten where they understood how to use technology, which was a side benefit. All right, now I'd like to invite staff from Metro East to share a few words. I think David's gonna talk to us.
Hello, that's right. I've also got a short presentation. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Thank you, Norm, and Kristi, and Rebecca. Appreciate you. Get this started here. You know, if you have any trouble seeing that. Thanks for having me. Over the past year, we've moved our executive style to one of shared leadership. We've also worked towards creating a new strategic plan. And we've worked to have a new agreement with the MH CRC. We feel that by pulling these components together, we've created a very pragmatic budget and a realistic plan for the future. This is our mobile media lab financed through a community technology grant. With it, we can teach filmmaking, podcasting, and digital storytelling, and a whole lot more. And we can now meet people where they're at, and that is very important to the residents of East County. We get to meet youth and families at community events. As you can see from the I Heart Rockwood event, a very positive experience. We've partnered with the Rockwood Library to deliver YouTube and TikTok camps. And we've also worked with the Gresham Summer Kids in the Park Program to bring some fun and technology to those hot summer days. We're also active in media education and literacy at Gresham High School and Gordon Russell Middle School, using simple tools that introduce a world of opportunity. Regarding digital literacy, with introduction to computers seen here at Rosewood Initiative, we're working with all women groups of Rohingya, Latinx, and Nepali. These digital skills to an immigrant, refugee, or low-income person are vital to being successful. We view digital access as a utility that everyone should have access to. These are pictures from our newly introduced cohort model, where we've just finished our first two, two groups with the Center for Positive Aging and Life Skills Oregon. With cohorts, we've seen very strong attendance, and it really allows us to mission align our work with our nonprofits. In addition to cohorts, we continue to receive a lot of community programs, much of which is hyper-local and relevant. With channels, these channels were vital during COVID where we were able to get messages out to the community very quickly. We also provide a bulletin board which offers many nonprofits a non-commercial advertising solution. With government meetings, we cover over two hundred a year, over three hundred and fifty hours of programming. During COVID, we didn't miss a beat or a meeting, and we have helped some of our jurisdictions with HB twenty-five sixty integration, enabling online participation in regular city council meetings. We are currently in the process of increasing the number of caption programs on our channels. Five percent of the world's population are deaf or hard of hearing, and Oregon has twenty-four percent hearing loss, second among all states. Also, about eighty percent of the general population are using captions regularly. Our Emmy-nominated production department continues to work with schools, government agencies, and local nonprofits to deliver their message. With Food Foray, we explore East County's food diversity. In Fall of the Water, we featured Judy Bluehorse, a native, and, and other native voices as well, as we tell the story of our connection, disconnection, and reconnection to water. Fall of the Water was shown at the Portland Echo Film Fest. We also made a series of lawn care videos with an environmental focus. This was a statewide, statewide collaborative project with over sixty nonprofits and government agencies involved. We'd like to share our most sincere thanks to you, the MH CRC, and the city of Troutdale, and of course, our other municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions if you have some?
Yeah, if anybody has questions for David, now's the time. Not seeing any. Thank you, David. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I wanna, wanted to personally thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and City Administrator Ray Young for allowing us to have the extra time to present this. Normally, we just come up here and just give a short spiel and away we go. But anyway, anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes.
Norm, how long have you been our representative?
I sat down and tried to count it up. I think it's, I think I got on it in nineteen ninety-five, so whatever that adds up to. So what, eighteen years?
I just wanted to thank you for that. That's usually why we don't have any questions either, because we, we know Norm so well and trust what he has to say. So at least that's what it is for me.
Well, once in a while, it's good to question me.
Yeah, Norm graciously accepted the appointment. So again, for night, the nineteenth, going on the nineteenth year, maybe.
I think it's a three-year term, so it'd be more than that.
Yeah, so thank you for helping East County dealing with this, this important technology commission and keeping this information coming. We need it. Our schools need it.
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's, you know, the program that funded that, the nineteen million, came out of the extra three percent.
Yeah.
Because there's, you know, there's a five percent basic franchise fee. And then through the contract or the franchise, you have an extra three percent. Essentially, one percent of that goes to help out the two community media centers. And then the other two percent, we provided for grants. And it racks up to a fair amount of money.
Yeah.
And so what we did was we cut part of that out specifically to take care of the TechSmart while still maintaining some of our community access grants.
Yeah.
Which made it really nice, so.
I did have one question, and actually, let's go to Counselor Glance first.
I have a couple of questions. I was a little curious in looking through how some of the funding was split up. Is it based on, so a couple scenarios. Let's Let's say that there is a multifamily unit and they supply cable. Are they counted as one or would they be counted as 20 units? And on that same question, if I have Comcast for cable and Zipley for fiber, am I counted as two subscribers? How does that kind of split up when you're talking about subscribers and percent of population and percent of?
Well, we count cable subscribers only.
Okay.
That's what we regulate. The actual fiber for internet access and all that stuff that's broadband is all regulated, you know, basically by the FCC. And we don't have any direct control over that, although more and more systems are using, you know, broadband internet to deliver the cable system. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, except for the multifamily part. Is that considered a single account or multiple accounts?
I think I'm not exactly sure on that, because a lot of the multifamily units have a separate contract with Comcast or whoever the provider is. And then they, you know, figure it out from there. So my guess is it might be just counted as one, but that's just that's just a guess.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I am going to open it up to public comment really quick before we entertain the motion. So let's, if there's no other comments or questions from council. All right, let's go ahead and open a public comment. Public comments open on agenda item number three, a motion to approve the MHCRC 2023-2024 annual budget and the report from MHCRC and Metro East. Anybody wishing to make comment, now's the time. On Zoom, let's start on Zoom. If you could, go ahead and raise your hand, and then I'll call on you and unmute and state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, not seeing anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council tonight wishes to make a comment? All right, not seeing anybody. Let's close public comment. If there's nothing else from council, and nothing else from Norm or Kristy or David, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, thank you.
I'll move adoption of the motion to approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's 2023-2024 annual budget.
Seconded by Counselor One. Or Wittrin, sorry. W's.
Yeah.
All the same. White, Wittrin, one.
Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Wittrin.
Yes.
Counselor Glance.
Yes.
And Counselor Ritma.
Yes.
All right, it passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Norm. I appreciate it. And again, like I echo.
Did you want to move the nomination or do you want to just let me sit in limbo land?
It is.
I did offer to 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 Ray Young to, you know, not do it, and he said, I'm going to come find you. Essentially what he said.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I appreciate you being our representative again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, everybody. Thank you, David. Thank you, Kristy. Appreciate your input and your work as well. Let's go ahead and move on to agenda item number four, a public hearing and second introduction of an ordinance adopting the City of Troutdale Park's master plan and amending the comprehensive land use plan goal eight to include modifications to the summary overview, reference to the 2023 Parks Master Plan, and a new list of policies. Mr. Berniker, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Ready, Sarah?
I'm nearly there.
Microphones on?
Yes, microphones on.
All right. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm David Berniker, Director of Community Development. The following is the second council meeting with the first hearing happening on occurring on June 13th. Their request this evening is to adopt the City of Troutdale Park Master Plan and by doing so, update the comprehensive land use plan. Approval of the approved proposed plan does not require any particular addition or change to our park system. The plan is primarily used to identify potential improvements in our park system that would be desirable and allow those projects to be part of our long-range plans and grant requests. It's important, and I mentioned this last time, to note that implementation of any item in the plan would require council approval throughout the land, throughout the budget process. Next. The current master plan was adopted 15 years ago in 2006. The Parks Master Plan, as we call the plan, update is a long-term plan for the City of Troutdale Parks and Recreation System. It's a 20-year plan. The plan sets a direction for the park system based on community values and needs and a comprehensive analysis of current challenges and future opportunities. The plan sets forth a unified vision with recommendations and strategies. Next. The plan is based on a community needs as well as existing and adopted plans and policies, including the city's comprehensive plan, town center plan, and others as shown up on the screen. Next. Staff and the consultant team have been working with the Parks Advisory Committee and City Council since the fall of 2021, resulting in the Parks Advisory Commission recommending adoption of the plan this spring. On May 24, 2023, Planning Commission recommended adoption of the plan and forwarded to City Council. On June 13, 2023, the Troutdale City Council held the first public hearing to consider adoption of the Parks Master Plan. After closing the public hearing, the City Council directed staff to remove the sentence dealing with the Glen Otto Park Master Plan, which calls for potential repurposing of existing picnic areas south of the site to camping. The adoption Parks Master Plan realizes realizes this, and the mention of camping from the plan has been removed. Next. This brings me to the staff recommendation, which is the staff recommends adopting the revised Parks Master Plan and adopting the proposed amendments to the City of Troutdale's comprehensive plan goal eight. And that's my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Berniker. Comments or questions from council? Counselor Glance.
I have one small request that makes this a lot easier for me to swallow. And it's on page 52, where we show the 9.3 million we're looking to potentially spend in the next five years. I'm hoping in the very bottom, where we talk about all costs shown or in 2022, dollars cost shown on table have been updated from source. I would like it to also say this amount includes grant funding. So it's not like the City of Troutdale is necessarily looking to spend 9.2 million, but our project cost from all sources would be 9.2 million. That's just my opinion.
I kind of agree with that, too. A lot of that's grant funding.
Yeah, it doesn't, we don't have to say how much or anything else, just that that amount would include grant funding.
So in the italicized asterisks down at the bottom?
Yep.
Can do that. Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Glance. Any other comments or questions from the council? Counselor White?
Bear with me, because I've got about eight.
Well, let's dig into it.
Take them in order. On page 17, under goal three, natural areas. 3.1 talks about identify areas of environmental significance, wetlands, sensitive species, and habitat to be fully protected from development. Now, but we're also at the same time in this plan talking about building trails in those same areas. So it's kind of a double standard. So I think we I think we should remove that because we are going to be utilizing that area for, like, the Beaver Creek Trail is a great example. It's in the floodplain. It's definitely a sensitive area. But yet we're proposing to build a trail through there. And also, whenever we are talking about these natural areas, I assume according to the map, we're talking about city-owned property. We're not talking about someone that might own property that that is in the floodplain. That would follow their separate rules.
Yes.
So we don't really need to mention that because it's covered on the map.
That is correct.
Okay. On this one, I think we we should probably just delete that.
What if we added when possible? Because I think it's still important to say that we have economic significant, you know, or environmental significance is important.
Says environmental significance.
Be fully protected from development when possible.
And I don't think, I mean, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Berniker and Ray, the trail exists. It's getting revitalized. The bridge is getting.
No, we're talking about the across from the RV Park. It's in this plan, so it'd go from Depot Park all the way to.
So not the Beaver Creek Trail.
There's sections of, you're talking about a different section. It is developed. This is a brand-new proposed connection.
Mayor, by my, we are, Mayor, we are currently working with Metro and other owners to acquire access to property on the west side of Beaver Creek between Depot and Glen Otto. Would they hope that at some point there would be a pedestrian trail that would connect the Depot by Cub terminus of the Sandy River Trail to a nicer and easier place to walk down to Glen Otto from the Depot?
Correct. My confusion was we haven't named that trail yet. And so when we mentioned Beaver Creek Trail, I was under the impression that we were talking.
Yeah, you could call it a different trail, but it's the one between Depot and Glen Otto, I think, is what Counselor White's.
Yeah, it's in this plan. So that's why I thought it counter dicks.
Ask a question real quick?
Sure.
So this to me says, this is a goal of these of these areas is to identify areas of environmental significance. So we don't have to say that that's environmentally significant to us at this point. It just says we should, to me, how I read this is, is we should look at, identify some areas, leave those areas alone, but that shouldn't impact any projects that we have. Is that unless there, unless I'm missing something? Is that, I don't know if you could provide context?
I think that was our reading of it that identifies gave you the room. And as I said in the beginning, Counselor, any decision that happens along parks property is something that has to go before you. So there's that kind of blanket coverage that you all have moving forward. The plan just sets for ideas of things to think about moving forward for the next 20 years.
So maybe like Sandy suggests that were were applicable, we may have that language.
And may I jump in here? Hi, I'm Cindy Mendoza, Director of Park and Recreation Planning at MIG. If possible, I can offer some clarification.
I, yeah, go ahead, Cindy. Thank you for being here.
Of course. One of the suggestions I may make is is part of the wording here that may be creating problems is to be fully protected. So I feel like we could simply say identify areas of environmental significance, wetlands, sensitive species, and habitat to minimize impacts associated with new development where applicable.
That sounds fantastic.
That did sound fantastic.
Yeah.
Perfect. We'll make that change.
Thank you, Cindy.
For this next one, on page 18, I do need to declare a potential conflict of interest because I own I own property along that proposed trail area. But I'm just going to throw this out anyway. I'm one vote, so I think it's, unless someone has a problem with me stating it, I'll go ahead. Like at Sunrise Park and stuff, when we have a trail like that, and I'm familiar with that area. It's a very narrow strip between the creek. And then there's eight adjacent property owners. They're going to have this new trail going basically through their back back area. And I'm just suggesting that we include money for a fence that would separate the private property from the the public trail. And I know they do that at Sunrise Park and Spring Water Corridor and other places like that.
That's something that we can consider as counsel when that.
Wait till it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's absolutely something we can take up with Ray.
Absolutely. This is still in the early stages of discussion with Metro and assisting in acquiring the rest of the property. The city already owns half the property between Depot and Glen Otto, and we're working to get easements and or ownership of parcels along there. And so we're looking a couple of years down the road, and we don't even have anything designed. I mean, when we get to that point, definitely the Parks Advisory Committee will be involved in the design process. Community outreach will be involved in the design process. So that concerns such as Counselor White will be definitely considered in the process.
Okay. And then on page 39, oh, never mind. We got that one covered. It's on the map. It was about, just talking about natural areas, I thought it'd be good to have on city-owned property. And then on the next page, page 40, the very last paragraph there, update park system development. To me, this feels a little bit like Scope creep because, you know, that should be a budget budget decision. When they're actually calling out, you know, dollar amounts on page 41, how much to budget for. So I feel like that that's that's really not a parks decision. That's a budget committee decision. So it'll only get locked in.
I believe I believe this is what it's asking. It's asking for an update to the park system SDCs. And so I don't think it's locking in a certain number. I believe it's just recommending that we move not move forward, that we consider updating the park SDC.
Yeah, I think that's right, Mayor. I mean, everything in this is just a consideration. There's nothing written in stone. It's what staff and the consultant kind of put forward with the Parks Advisory Committee of, you know, of the breadth of projects and ideas that could be coming your way. Again, in your purview to decide what to do with them when the time is appropriate.
The one thing that, I mean, I'm looking through this paragraph, and I look for, I call them soft words, like should, instead of concrete words like shall or must, scary words.
Yeah.
What if we just added the word consider in front of the subheads? Consider increasing park and facility maintenance is consider updating park S system SDCs.
On that highlighted, or I'm sorry, that boldened title, consider update park system SDCs.
And consider increase park and facility maintenance staffing levels. Because that makes it more of a something to review. Here's what they recommend. Does that, you know, then it can go into a full process.
Now, what this whole thing is, is a consideration, like.
Yeah, sometimes it's nice to call that out, especially when, as was mentioned before, we have words like would instead of should. Scary words.
I agree again, Cindy Mendoza at MIG. I think the intent here is to create a document that allows you the flexibility to make decisions that are appropriate at the time these projects go forward. At the same time, this is intended to give you good data for decision-making. So it points out where you may need additional maintenance dollars or may want to consider increasing your SDCs to be able to fund some of these projects. So I do like the suggestion of adding consider in front of it, just as an acknowledgement that this will come back to council to make decisions going forward.
Mayor, if I might direct to page 37, which is the opening paragraph for all those next several pages to talk about it. It does say these provide broad direction and policy guidance for all aspects of the plan. And based on these goals and their supporting policies, the following recommend. plan. And based on these goals and their supporting policies, the following recommendations provide more specific direction. So the the heading paragraph for the next three or four pages we're talking about is clearly labeled recommendations.
Actually, that's what I was gonna say. So.
Well, you should have been faster. Sorry.
I'm I hear what uh Counselor Glance and Counselor White are saying, but I think it is, it's I I see it written as clearly that it is recommendations and not not written in stone as it's. I do appreciate what you're saying, but thank you, Ray.
And I'm almost done here. And I'm on, doesn't have a page number. I'm in the funding.
What's the?
Um, it's on other recreational opportunities. It's the second to last paragraph, starting with the Columbia River is an underutilized recreational resource.
Is it in the appendices?
Where are you, Counselor?
So what list of policies will be placed with a list of goals and objectives? Let me see the page. This is in the appendix. I went through the whole thing, so.
I I just curious for page one?
I'm not sure.
Page number. It always makes it difficult.
It looks like the staff report.
Part of them. It's the very last few pages. We're talking about the master plan. The I just had a question about.
And the only reason why I think it's in the staff report is because it's got um it's got uh redacted sentences on it, and I don't think they're gonna have redacted sentences in this master plan.
Uh, exhibit B?
Yes, exhibit B. There we go. Exhibit B after the appendices. After appendix F, funding options. Last page. Is that what you said, Counselor White?
No, it's not the last page. It's um exhibit B, the third third page.
What's the first paragraph on that page?
It says the Columbia River is an underutilized recreational resource in the Troutdale area.
Other recreational opportunities in the middle?
Yeah. Is everyone got it?
This is actually the comprehensive plan language. Anything that was there previously remains unless it is uh redacted, which tells you what would be deleted or underlined, which tells you what would be added. The other language that you're referencing was there previously.
I see it now.
Yeah, I just had a question because it's talking about a boat ramp on Sundial, a private boat ramp on Sundial Road that I don't think uh exists any longer. Like it's now knife river.
Oh.
But it says north of Troutdale, so that's what threw me off. The Sun Sundial Road is is in Troutdale. I mean, we used to have a boat ramp there. And I'm the one always advocating for that as a really the most potential uh for Troutdale, even if we had to do something like our attorney suggested it sometime that we partner with um Bram Ron, where they have a lot more flexibility to to do like fishing piers and dogs. So I'm wondering if that shouldn't be part of this plan that we pursue pursue that because that green section of land up there in Troutdale to me is just a wasted opportunity. And it's an area I'd love to to be able to utilize myself.
I I'm sorry, man. It it I understand what you're saying. You said that many times. We appreciate that. But isn't that what the plan is saying? Identifying that it is unutilized and we should consider it for
Yeah.
future.
It's not really mentioned in the plan, though. It's it's only in this uh appendix.
Uh, yeah. It's absolutely a a good goal and idea that we should
Maybe that's something.
maximize as best we can. And I thought that's kind of what it says.
I was glad to see it, believe me, but um.
Yeah. Where are we?
It's it's um just, uh, there isn't any page. It's immediately after appendix F, funding options. And it goes into exhibit B. Uh, attachment E, comprehensive land use plan, go late update, and then you keep going down until you get to other recreational opportunities. And it's the second to last paragraph on that page. And it starts with the Columbia River is an under under underutilized recreational resource in the Troutdale area. River access is provided by a private boat launch north of Troutdale off of Sundial Road and a public boat ramp in Fairview. Recreational use of the Columbia River in Troutdale is relatively limited at this time, so it's agreeing with you. The city recognizes the potential for development of this area for recreational needs. So I believe it's saying that. I believe it's saying that the city understands that the need is there. And I believe that gives us this this plan, gives us the opportunity to explore those options. And I think this paragraph solidifies that in the way I'm reading it. Am I somewhat correct? Yeah.
That's how. But.
Okay.
And then it, just a few general comments. Um, you know, the plan talks about areas that are underserved and you know, I'd have to argue with a a city the size of Troutdale, five five square miles. We have twenty-two parks, uh, not counting College Park, that is eighty-eight acres. And uh all the trails, Beaver Creek Canyon, and then all the properties that that are all the parks that border our city that are huge, like Lewis and Clark Park, the Columbia River Gorge. You know, I I don't think there's a single underserved area in Troutdale.
Uh-oh, Counselor Glance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how'd you know that? Uh, College Park, uh, most of that is actually Mountain Community College and not Park. The Mountain Community College kindly turns the other way, but that property is not park property.
And Counselor Glance is um made more than one comment that her neck of the neck of woods is uh underutilized.
The only proper park we have, you can't even use during school hours because it's adjacent to a school playground and they kick you off.
And it's well, in the street, that brings up the street and fifteen acres that that isn't mentioned. Is that because we don't actually own it yet? But we know we are eventually gonna own it.
It probably.
Wait, we do? I would love to know this for sure.
I will.
I believe it's because we do not own it.
So that's important to keep in mind, but I guess we gotta let that one go. But I think I was under the the understanding that Metro owns College Park.
Only that corner.
Yeah.
It's just maybe an acre or two. It's pretty small.
Well, it looks like they are doing some improvements out there.
I did see that too. I was pretty excited.
Good. So I just thought it it sounded bad for our city when we are a student in parks, you know, Wood Village has one park. I think, how many does Gresham have?
Oh, I have no idea.
And they have a city with a population of a hundred thousand.
They do have a lot of parks, but uh.
I think it's a product of walking distance of a five-minute walk, not necessarily number of parks. So it's just um, it's acknowledged that I think the city does have a healthy number of parks. That doesn't mean that they're all within radius, a short walking radius of where people reside. So that's what it's sort of suggesting.
Yeah, I'll say that presentation that we had last council meeting, it showed, I mean, for lack of a better term, a park desert in South Troutdale near Counselor uh Glance's, uh, like I said, neck of the woods. So nothing within a ten minute, I think, was it ten minute or thirty minute?
About ten minutes to get to the school, assuming that I can even get to that, but yeah.
Yeah. So.
Well, I got my last comment.
Yep.
Um, it talks about planting trees and stuff, but I remember we had these professional consultants came in and toured our town and advised us. Uh, it was from a grant. And they they were telling us not to block our our vistas and our views with more trees. In fact, they were even saying we're we're blocking some really spectacular views. So I would just want the Parks Department to be aware uh where they plant to not to not block any of our our views of like Routhman's Block, for example, and there's many others. Because I agreed with the consultants and I think the rest of the council did as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor White. I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from council? Uh, Counselor Ripm.
On uh page twenty-one, seven point four. She's under funding and partnership. Dedicate the revenues from disposed parks, park properties to improve the existing park system or develop parks in underserved areas. I I I could not support that statement, and I didn't notice it before. But um I don't agree with disposing of park property, period. And I don't want it in here. I don't even want it there. So I suggest we delete seven point four and renumber the others.
Dedicate the revenues from disposed park properties.
Good point, because where are the plans?
I don't want I don't want to dispose of park properties.
To improve.
Assume something would happen, but it's not mentioned in the plan. That would be your.
I I don't want it in the document. I don't even, it's not, it has nothing to do with a master plan for parks in Troutdale, in my mind. I guess one of the first thing years ago, one of the first things I got a lot of flack about was trying to save the sale of park property. And I fought it tooth and nail and eventually persuaded my fellow counselors to my, to at least the majority of them, to my position, and I still feel that way. And I don't want revenues. I don't even want a reference to revenues from disposed park properties. So that's my suggestion. I also point out on page twenty-one, if you look at seven point six, it says, consider charging a user fee for non-Troutdale residents. I agree with both Counselor Glance and Counselor White about adding the words consider on page forty. I, there there it is on page twenty-one. It's there. There's no harm in having it in there. And I think it softens the uh anyway, I agreed with both Counselor Glance and Counselor White about the changes on page page forty. I'd also, one other thing. Um, on on page fifteen, there there's a reference to explore options for allowing on-leash dog access, access to parks. We're we're doing the off-leash leash park. I I I think, let's see how that goes. I realize this is a twenty-year plan. We can always consider on-leash access sometime, but I don't want it. I don't want it in our Parks Master Plan that we're gonna explore on-leash access to dogs in our parks. I, you know, they're I love dogs. Don't get me wrong, but I uh I let's try the off-leash park. We finally got one. It's been fought for for years. Let's not get carried away.
Where is that at?
Page fifteen. I just have it here.
Seven.
One point seven.
Yeah, one point seven.
Mr. Mayor, full disclosure, um, they've been watching the Parks Advisory Committee. They are actually discussing it now uh to come up with a possible recommendation for the council to consider. So it's something the citizens are talking about and they do want to consider. And the Parks Advisory Committee is discussing that issue now. It's not an unlimited dogs everywhere in parks, but is there some way to balance needs of the citizens? But that's something they're just talking about. Just to understand, they are considering that issue right now.
Well, I hate to get crosswise with the Parks Committee because they they they're dedicated volunteers as we all are, but uh before we explore options for allowing on-leash, anyway, I don't I don't favor it being in the master plan. And I would suggest that be dropped. We're doing the off-leash uh the uh off-leash park. And I I favor that, but anyway, those were those were my comments.
I've been listening to some of that conversation and obviously can't comment during it, but you know, having been knocked over by big dogs that break loose of the owner you know, and come running at you and they're friendly, but they still knock you over into other things. I'm not a fan of parks being on leash with dogs.
I would.
I mean, there's kind of a tendency for people to, once they get in the park to.
It's not.
Yeah.
Hey, just so we're clear, one person at a time, so that way we can actually make sense of what who's saying what. Um, I will say, I'll make a comment, though, that I was really surprised that this wasn't already in there. I'll I'll make a kind of a glib comment that Wood Village hundred percent of their parks are on-leash dog. But that's only because they have one park. So but I will say I'm in absolute support of uh keeping it in and letting the Parks Committee go through it, uh mull it over, vet it. And I would love to see Troutdale become more pet-friendly uh for for families and neighbors. Um, I think comparing on-leash rules to off off-leash dog parks is kind of apples and oranges, you know, you can't, you can't really compare one to the other. And my guess is the off-leash park is gonna be very busy. And it would be more advantageous for us to have the community to have more parks to go to and explore more of our green spaces with their four-legged family members uh than telling them not to. Um, so I I like keeping it in. Um, I, like I said, I was surprised we didn't allow it already. Counselor White?
Yeah, I I remember um when you did the proclamation, council didn't like that you were kind of inviting parks or dogs anywhere in the town. And we and we corrected that. So I think the majority of council might still agree. I agree with taking that out. Um, one of the reasons we picked Columbia Park for the dog park is because there's no, there's no residents near there. Because you know, there's good dog owners and there's bad dog owners, and some people just let their dog bark nonstop. And um the other thing, it's kind of a liability for the city. Maybe that's something after public comment, maybe we could take a vote on that one.
It's a good time, Counselor One wants to say that. Just a good time to remind council that just like the Parks Master Plan does not obligate the city to do anything. If you cut something out of the master plan like that, it doesn't stop the Parks Committee or the citizens in still considering it.
Yeah.
But it creates a lot of momentum. And um if it's a bad idea, just like the camping at Glen Arrow Park, that's our oversight. That's our job to pull those items. And I personally wouldn't have voted for the dog park if I had known the concept was gonna be to allow dogs in every park. And uh I I grew up with dogs. I've had a dog my whole life, so it's like but um I know what it's like and and certain breeds of dogs can be pretty intimidating, especially to children and you know, dog attacks do happen. So just think it's something that we should vote on. But I'll wait till after public comment.
Counselor.
This is it. Nothing will change about our rules and the archery and dogs without the council voting on it. That's it will always come before council to set changes. So you'll have an opportunity to discuss it, debate that, make that decision at some future date if if Parks Advisory makes a recommendation to change our.
You know, I would also add uh just some context with regards to the public involvement, that it was one of the top findings in terms of community needs. The community is asking for parks that allow dogs. And the plan does not suggest that it should be necessarily only off-leash areas or only on-leash. It gives the flexibility to explore a few different options for addressing those needs that were demanded by the public. It is what things we're seeing is one of the greatest trends in parks and recreation right now. Besides pickleball, it's dogs in parks. So this is saying, you know, address this through your your normal protocols to make sure this need is being met.
Yep. Thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it. I'm gonna ask everybody on Zoom to raise their hands and I will call on them. So we don't get too many people talking over one another in virtual and then in person. Thank you very much. Counselor One?
I just want to say one thing first is I think that I don't want to lose, I don't think I want us to, as a group, to lose focus that this is like a ideology or a plan, like these are suggestions, they're ideas. And I I think that having things in here to discuss and everything has to come back to us. So having things then that I don't like is probably good because I wouldn't like them to be discussed and maybe persuaded a different way. So I I I don't want us to get too nitty-gritty on this because I still feel like anything that would do would have to come back to us and we would have to approve it anyways. So also, I think that this went through a rigorous process with the community and has things in here. and has things in here that maybe we have not heard of or thought about. And so I want to be respectful of that. And then there's the second thing is that I can't disagree more with a couple, a couple of, about the dogs. I think that, uh, like I love to take my dog everywhere with me, like she's part of our family. She's well-trained. That's on me. I can't be responsible for other people and what they do with their dog. I can't, I can't demand that they train their dog, but I do feel like I see it more and more, especially in Portland, in this area, that people value their dogs as part of their family and bringing them to the, to picnic at the park on leash is something that they should be able to do. And so I think that that needs to be included in here. And I think that it's something that we should strongly consider. I don't know what, I didn't know that we can't bring our dogs to most parks or in Troutdale either, did ever. Uh, but I think it's important to, to keep that in, discuss um, as a group at a later date in time, whenever that recommendation comes, so.
Okay, Councillor Glantz?
That was fast. Um, just a, a quick comment that I think it should stay in. And I think it's reasonable to have it discussed, but I also think it's uh, important that if we have some strong opinions on that, that it's not like Park spends a lot of time, creates this great plan, and then it comes to council and we're like, heck no. Uh, so I think it's good that at some point we have a little bit more conversation. And I'd argue that the amount of trails that exist in Troutdale are more than adequate for a lot of dogs. And, you know, there are people and children especially who are afraid of dogs. And I just don't think that that's where we should be headed with parks.
Mr. Jonah Jacobson, our Parks Superintendent. Welcome to the council meeting. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, I would just like to point out, uh, from Councillor Glantz's, uh, previous comment that many of the, the trails, uh, that exist in, um, the city of Troutdale, uh, are in, um, what the, the Parks, uh, Master Plan refers to as, um, biological or ecologically sensitive areas. If you're talking about Beaver Creek, that is one of the areas that the Parks Division of Public Works has already been discussing to not allow dogs, uh, because of the ecological impacts of dogs. Um, my only comments regarding the, um, uh, permission of dogs within city parks, whether that is on leash or off leash, is that, um, the Parks Division eagerly awaits direction from this council um, and, uh, on, on this issue, one way or the other. Um, and so do many citizens of, of the city. Um, I feel, um, more concerns and complaints about the issue of dogs in parks than, than, than maybe anything else in the last um, six weeks that I, I have, uh, been in my position, which is not very long, but, um, that issue has come up enough times that, and I have had to recommend to enough citizens of Troutdale, uh, that they participate in these meetings in the future and bring their concerns to this council. Um, because, uh, and, and, and their concerns are on both sides of the issue. Um, so I would say that, um, uh, whatever your decision may be, uh, the Parks Division eagerly awaits clear direction um, as to how to proceed with the issue of dogs. Because at the moment, um, there is, um, some amount of ambiguity, especially after the, the pet-friendly proclamation um, from the mayor's office. And so, um, uh, people, people out in the city parks don't know exactly what the rules are. And, and neither does the Parks Department. And we, we would like to post some clear signs, uh, that tell people one way or another, um, what the rules are. So, um, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Appreciate it. I'll say, you know, that I like, Councillor One said it, um, I like having things in these master plans that I don't necessarily agree with because it invites conversation. It invites discussion. It invites the process of allowing our, uh, various citizen committees to go through and chew it up and recommend to council what the community wishes and then allows us the opportunity to make that vote and make that decision. If we make this any more concrete, I believe we remove a lot of that potential for conversation. I don't necessarily agree with everything in it. But I do agree a hundred percent when staff tells us that whatever decision that comes out of this master plan is going to come in front of our desk regardless, and we have to vote on that regardless. Um, I want to point out also that, uh, Councillor Ripmstead, he didn't want to necessarily step on Parks Committee's toes, but they've chewed this up and spit it out with a recommendation to approve it after looking at it twice. And it's gone through Planning Commission. And now it's come to us on a second time. Um, I think I would like us to approve this and move it forward tonight. Full well in knowing that we are the decision-makers of what's going to come out of this plan and the direction we're going to give staff moving forward. This is not concrete. It's, it's a big conversation document and it allows us to mull any decision coming forward uh, through our office before any shovel breaks ground. And so I don't want to lose sight of that. Um, I'd, I'd like us to, uh, like, uh, Jonah, Jonah just stated, give a little bit more guidance. Not necessarily direction, guidance on what Troutdale should, um, move forward towards. And again, it's all going to come back in front of us. Uh, Councillor Caswell, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, uh, basically agree word for, word for word with everything you just said. And I, I just wanted to make my opinion on this known in support of basically word for word, everything you just said. So, yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Caswell. Uh, Councillor Whitton, do you have?
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, Parks looked at, plans looked at it. I agree we should leave it in. Somewhere we're going to find a middle ground on the dog piece. Because just because you don't have to root for all parks. But there are some people that want it. There are some people that don't. There are some people that want to go to the park, they not have dogs running around and we should give that to them. There are some people that have dogs and want to get into the park. So at some point, we're going to have to find a happy medium to make all our constituents happy, right? So.
If you figure that happy medium is to make everybody happy, let us know.
But, but I think for now, we leave it in. It's a discussion point we're going to have down the road. This, this document's been well done by a lot of people.
Councillor Ripm.
Hearing you all, I am persuaded to drop the proposal to check, to change the page fifteen item. Uh, I, I still worry, I don't know how, who's going to enforce the on-leash rules, but uh, I will drop my opposition to that and we'll just leave it the way it is. I still want my other ones, but not that one.
Thank you, Councillor Ripm. Um, any other comments from council before I open up the public hearing? Any other comments from staff before I open the public hearing? Any comments from, uh, Mrs. Mendoza? Uh, Councillor Glantz?
Yeah, I've been trying to track the changes. How did we end up on page forty with, uh, inserting consider? That one seemed, I've heard both sides and I'm not sure where we ended up.
I'll, I'll reiterate what I just said. I'm not going to reiterate what I just said, but fine with adding the word consider if it creates a softer approach in the title heading.
Okay, thanks.
I'm absolutely fine doing that. And I think staff already said that's an easy fix.
Mayor, and that was for, consider the update of the park SDCs as well as consider increased parking facility maintenance staffing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, not seeing anything else. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing uh, regarding an ordinance adopting the City of Troutdale Parks Master Plan and amending the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Goal Eight to include modifications to the summary overview referenced to the 2023 Parks Master Plan and a new list of policies. Uh, let's start with Zoom. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment uh, regarding this agenda item, now's the time. Go ahead and raise your hand. I'll call on you and, uh, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody inside council chambers tonight? Please go ahead. I'll have, uh, Mr. Burmeyer. Yep, thank you.
Hi, I'm Shelley Reynolds, Troutdale. I'm also the Chairperson of Parks Advisory. Uh, I just want to take a few minutes of your time to say thank you to the people who worked so hard on this plan. I was the chairperson through the entire project. And we had many discussions and no arguments. And we had many objections, all done with kindness and respectfulness. It was an amazing experience. And what you have before you is a document that is to open conversations. To say that all of us agreed on everything in that document would be a major stretch. To say that we all agreed that with the soft words and the especially consideration uh, for, with further citizen involvement, with further information, with further involvement from the Parks Advisory Committee, we all agreed that it was time to move this project forward. And so to say thank you to the, my fellow Parks Committee members, um, I also want to say thank you to retired Park Superintendent Tim Siri. He was an invaluable source of information. He was our cheerleader. He was, he was the one to keep us moving forward. And then finally to John Venus and his never-ending patience with us as we made changes day in and day out on this thing. Um, regarding dogs in the park, we're going to go there. Um, just for a brief moment, uh, our understanding was that that was actually a city thing and not necessarily just a park thing. Um, that dogs were coming to our parks, whether we wanted them or not. So it's in there. Now that said, I don't think too many of us disagreed with it because all of us kind of came to terms with the fact that people are going to do it anyway. Uh, I live on a park. I live on Llewellyn Park. Uh, it's a no-dog park, has been a no-dog park since I moved in. And there are dogs there every day, off-leash, on-leash, every day. For the most part, they're pretty respectful and, and we have no objections. They don't bark. Um, but just so you know, that enforcement, if you, if you say no, you have to be prepared to enforce it. Otherwise, it's, it's just a parent saying no with no slap on the wrist, right? It's, it's ineffective. Um, so thank you. I've said my thank you. Thank you to the Planning Commission for going through every word. Thank you to all of you for going through every word and being so diligent. Uh, and thank you for considering moving this forward.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go ahead and finish the public hearing and then, uh, we'll move forward with questions immediately after that. Uh, yeah, next person?
Okay, Diane Castillo-Wide. I'm on a few committees that I'm here as a citizen. And, um, for, uh, page fifteen, item one point seven pertaining to dogs. Um, I, Sunrise Park, it works. There's not twenty-two picnic tables like Glen Auto Park, three covered shelters, two large barbecues, two small barbecues, a playground, a, um, a venue for weddings, quinceañeras, and events that are outdoors. So there's kind of a unique situation going on in Glen Auto Park where, um, there's a lot of food. The dogs have been seen, um, jumping on the tables. Um, there's, I was at a wedding that was outside, gowns, dresses, everything. So not a good place for somebody not to have cleaned up. Um, the observances have been that when people come in with the dog on leash, uh, fifty percent of them are off. The signs are, uh, confusing because, um, at the, or the picnic area, there's signs that says no dogs. And then there's signs that say dogs on leash only. There's also two poop bag stations. Um, I was at the beach today and some people came from that portion of the park, came down a different path with their two dogs. And, um, so they had to have gone past, uh, one sign that's going down the trail that has about, uh, thou shall not eat things. So there's, you know, there's a whole bunch of different things you, you can't do down there. One of them was no dog. So, um, it, it looked like that, that somebody had created an effort to allow leash dogs only in that section. Um, so we're, like we're saying that all parks are different. I agree, like Jordan was saying, it might work some places, it might not work others. Um, the other thing are, besides, uh, all the weddings and the events and everything that's, that's up there. Um, the beach portion, for the lifeguards, if there's a dog and a child, they have to be in the water. There's, it's just like a situation can arise that, um, when dogs get tired, they're exhausted, they look for the highest place and they, my dog has done this to me a lot of times, ju- come on me and pushing me down. So that, that's a situation there. Um, living on the water by the park, I've seen, um, pit bulls and German Shepherd spide and stuff. Um, there's, there is, dogs are allowed on the west side of the Sandy River. They're, they're always across and people already know to, if they're going to usually, to bring a dog, they do it there. And then also Lewis and Clark Park in that beach as well, along with the trail system that goes to Thousand Acres or it goes around to the, uh, it goes around to the outlets. Um, so I don't think there's a burden for, in that area for dogs to be, uh, off-leash. But there's just, to me, there's a lot of situations where, um, uh, dogs present at Glen Auto doesn't work. Now, in addressing Sugar Pine, Sugar Pine does a lot of advertisement saying dog friendly and dog welcome. I propose to them, if we must do dogs there, that, um, there's this green space that's between their, um, kind of their trailer behind their, their seating establishment and the, uh, the lifeguard of the, uh, AMR statue. There's that green space there. So I, I would recommend that you say dogs only here because they already bring in their dogs. And I, I don't think it's fair for a dog not to have an area to relieve themselves coming from somewhere else and people coming to Sugar Pine and then wanting an opportunity to use Sugar Pine. So to me, that would be, uh, uh, an idea as a, uh, that would work. Um, looking at Glen Auto Park, I looked at the trail system as well. Um, I believe that the best vistas and views are along the, uh, where the picnic tables currently are at Sugar Pine. Before, we used to have a, about a seven-foot or eight-foot, uh, area that there was no picnic tables. I believe Sugar Pine could move their picnic tables a little bit closer towards their drive-through. There's already some there. They can move the other ones out on the fence closer because I think we should, um, have that as a path area again. That's a, a really great way to go visit the, the Sandy River and also to observe the vistas. And also there's, there's kind of regulations on, uh, top of slope where there could even be a picnic table. But I had recommended to Chris a long time ago, let Sugar Pine put picnic tables there. We get to use it, they get to use it. It's a win-win. So I'm just suggesting picnic tables get moved a little bit and then we, we retain that as a pathway to, a safe pathway to get to the, uh, the Sandy River Bridge, come around and then go to the park and explore other areas. Um, also the park, um, the entrance to the, uh, the picnic area is, uh, it's, it's not very inviting. And also the ways to walk to get to that are confusing too, when there's events and things going on there. I just think that the way, uh, people walk through the, uh, parking area, it's, it's very confusing and it's not safe. On a busy day on Saturday or Sunday, there's a lot, line of cars trying to park into Glen Auto Park. There's an entrance into the drive-through. There's an exit out of the drive-through. And, um, I've taken the four grandchildren with my daughter and it's, it's just not, it doesn't look like it's safe for anyone. And I kind of, kind of mapped out something, have a little drawing. So when that conversation, okay, when that conversation comes up, I, I have some thoughts. I know, uh, Marley would be great at it, of course, uh, to aesthetically and with signage and everything else. I, I think we need to take away the confusion from the park though right now because people don't know if they can or they can't at Glen Auto. I'm, I'm thinking that Glen Auto is not a good place to have dogs. Uh, just because of the swimming and the events and the twenty-two picnic tables. But again, have a little respite area for Sugar Pine and, and some compromise there. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anybody else wishing to make comment?
All right. If I may, um.
Let me, let me go ahead and close public comment first.
Okay.
Public comment is now closed. Mr. Jacobson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I-
Just in response to the previous comment, staff recommends in our drafts of any any dog ordinances that might come before council in the future. Staff recommends that dogs be excluded from from areas such as Glen Auto. Both, you know, for the reasons that were previously mentioned in terms of safety, but also for ecological reasons and in terms of sanitation. So, you know, any any recommendations you see from the staff going forward will 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 say that Glen Auto Park and the riverfront area will not be open to dogs.
Mr. Ray Young.
Rest assured, counsel, that any details will be reserved on a council meeting somewhere down the road for all of the details of dogs or not dogs or where dogs will be fully discussed in this room. So know that whatever comes out of the Parks Advisory Committee, we will set up a time for council, spend plenty of time talking about it because it is a hot issue on both sides, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Glantz.
Yep, I just wanted to ask Shelley a question. Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah, you can ask.
I'm just wondering if she's okay as the Parks Chairman with the changes that we have suggested so far.
Will you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Absolutely, Cindy. Counselor Glantz, it's this really is a document for discussion. And when I say that not all of us agreed on everything in the document, that is absolutely true. We don't expect all of you to agree with everything in the document either. We put it forward knowing that there were there would be things that people pulled out and that it would be changed to some degree. So, yeah, I have I have no problem. I see Carol Allen is also on and could probably answer that question as well. But speaking for myself, I don't see that any changes you've made is of concern.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Do we have any other comments or questions from council?
Just a comment.
Counselor White.
You know, I'm glad Shelley brought up Tim Siri too because he did do a lot of this work. And I'm personally gonna miss him. He did a great job for us.
He was a Parks Champion. All right.
Not that we don't love you, Jonah.
Not that Jonah Jonah's just got a big, he's got a big rake to to work while Tim is gone. So good luck with that.
No, no offense, no offense taken. Thank you. Yeah, I very much enjoyed Tim for the short time that I knew him as well.
Okay. So if there's no other comments or questions, any other comments from staff?
Do you want me to kind of go through the comments?
Actually, let's go ahead and do that. Thank you.
So just for clarity, what I heard was that on, starting with page 17, that section 3.1 and Cindy Mendoza had some ideas, like getting cat dog, how to reward that first statement or reward it, or maybe she can just repeat that. Cindy, do you have it there written?
Yes, on 3.1, we're rewarded to say identify areas of environmental significance, parentheses, wetland-sensitive species and habitat to minimize impacts associated with new development where feasible.
And I think technically, Mayor, we're doing this as laying out what the amendments would be so that it can be approved tonight with the following amendments. That would be one.
Okay. Sarah, you have that? Okay.
Second one was discussed was on page 21, the removal of 7.4.
Minus 7.4. That was the disposed parkland revenue. Okay.
The next item was on page 40, and it was two items. Adding the word consider to each headings. Consider increased park and facility maintenance staffing levels, number one. Number two, consider updating park system SDCs.
Okay.
Then the final one I had was where we started, which was on page 52, which is adding to the bottom of the page in the italics, talking about the nine million-plus amount is to include grant funding.
I have the actual wording on that. This amount includes grant funding.
Sarah's got it. Thank you, Mr. Bernicker. Yeah, I think that encompasses everything that we talked about. So with that being said, Counselor Rittma.
With that being said, I would move adoption of the resolution with the amendments just described. And the resolution is a resolution providing for a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, is that right?
Counselor Rittma, that's item number four.
I'm on the wrong thing.
Yes.
Hold on. An ordinance adopting the City of Troutdale Park's master plan and amending the comprehensive land use plan goal to include modifications to the summary overview, reference to the 2023 Parks Master Plan, and a new list of policies.
Second.
All right, Sarah.
Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Wittrin.
Yes.
Counselor Glantz.
Yes.
Counselor Rittma.
Yes.
Passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for this discussion. Thank you to staff. Thank you to our committees. Without your guidance, we would we would not be done tonight. So thank you very much. But that's what this is all about. Counselor White.
Once we give a final printout with the corrections, it would be possible to get a copy of that.
I would love that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's move on to agenda item number five. Our second public hearing of the evening, a resolution providing for a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget transfers and making appropriation changes. Mr. Mueller, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Although I was hopeful there that Counselor Rittma was just gonna take care of it for me there a second ago, you know?
I was getting ahead of myself.
Would have been all done, but you know, anyway, okay.
Careful, he'll say move to adjourn.
Ah, yes. Okay, well, the item, this agenda item is, for those of you that have been on the council, you know, is a perennial one that I bring to the council, the last council meeting scheduled for the fiscal year, which is this evening's meeting. It's a supplemental budget and budget transfers. Sometimes it doesn't include a supplemental budget. It just depends on the nature of the activity during the course of the year. But we have gone through the process of getting the supplemental budget notice and publication published in the Gresham Outlook as required by the local budget law. This item takes care of the transfers within funds and between funds from contingency to other divisions. It's to deal with the what in the local budget law terminology is referred to as the unanticipated and necessary expenditures that occurred that hadn't occurred when the anticipated at the time the budget had been adopted. As I recapped, of course, in the staff report, the background and so forth, but the this budget that we're adjusting for the final three days of this fiscal year was, of course, considered by the Budget Committee more than 15 months ago. So there, of course, has been a lot of actual occurrence versus what might have been planned or anticipated or expected to occur over the course of the subsequent 15 months. This addresses fixing those differences between what we thought would happen and what did happen in various different areas. The budget law expects and provides for this process. There's a whole section of it just dealing with with transfers to be dealt with after after adoption. I went through and as is typical, outlined the specifics in the staff report that are supported then in the in the resolution. Deals with adjusting items overall in each of the funds. They'll still be well under budget in all cases once the transfers have been accomplished. You will note that I usually mention each year that one of the first few years that I was in this role, I missed doing one item. And there was, we were more than 200,000, I think, under budget for that particular fund. And one of the individual buckets was over budget by 1,400. And of course, the auditors wrote me up for that. So some of these transfers are to make sure that I don't stub my toe in that regard again. In any case, I am happy to address any questions that the council may have on that which was outlined in the staff report.
Counselor Glantz.
Yes, can you speak a little bit to the transfer we're making that ties to Old City Hall, just for public record?
Yes, the the sale of Old City Hall was accomplished for $435,000. Form of payment was in two two forms, $1,000 cash. And then the remainder was in the form of essentially a note carryback. And so the process of getting that on the balance sheet, it went on on one side, which increased the fund balance as a result of the accounting side. This accounts for the provision of the development incentive credits the council provided as part of that transaction. And then that then there matches it so that we don't distort the fund balance by saying that we have $434,000 more cash laying around, which we don't really. So really, all this is, as I tried to describe in the staff report, is the accounting and bookkeeping part of the process. And just to reassure you, there was no $434,000 of cash that went out the door as a part of this process, so.
And just for new councilors, the reason we did that was it was we wanted to be able to keep City Hall in some form or another. And the cost to renovate it outweighed any benefit of us trying to charge for it.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council? Let's go ahead and open up. Counselor White, you good?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Public hearing is now open regarding a resolution providing for a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022, 2022, 2023 budget transfers and making appropriation changes. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment? Now's the time, go and raise your hand. And I'll call and you state your name and city residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers? Mr., let's go, Mr. Wilcox. It's all, it's your show tonight.
Well, Wilcox, Troutdale. PC is down, so I wasn't able to print. So now I'm digital tonight, just like you guys.
I'll get you a sticker for the back.
This is very different. Okay. There's one section I had questioned about. Page three, paragraph three of the staff report. And I quote, "A budget transfer from contingency to ensure budget compliance were unanticipated. Necessary additional expenses of the restaurant incentive of the sewer infrastructure, system development charge subsidy, Wayfinder beer development of the Highlands Tap House Beer Garden and Food Truck Pods, transferring $63,000 from contingency to Tourism and Economic Development Division." Related to that, I have two comments. Number one, two new councilors might not be familiar with this program, which by the way expires on Friday. And number two, why is the $63,000 transferred to Tourism and Economic Development rather than the sewer fund? There's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. I appreciate it. Anybody else? Oh, no, no. All right, let's go ahead and close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I assume you'd like me to address the questions raised during public comment?
There is nothing more that I would enjoy. Actually, I lie. I would enjoy dinner. I would enjoy dinner more, but please, Eric.
The $63,000, the expense side of providing the incentive development, the sewer SDC credit for the Wayfinder Beer and Highlands Tap House, which of course is right across the street from us, the construction going on right there on the outside of our meeting room here. The expense side of that is booked in the Tourism and Economic Development Division. So that's why it's referenced there in terms of we move the expenditure, the appropriation authority into that division in order to incur the expense. And then the revenue side of it, just as Mr. Wilcox was inquiring about, why doesn't it go to the sewer fund? Well, that's the other side. That's the credit side. So the essentially the debit or the charge side is where the expense is. What the budget law focuses on is the expense side. And then the revenue side is is going into the sewer fund to pay for that sewer SDC charge that the program paid for rather than the developer paid.
Okay. Sufficient. Any other comments or questions from council? Any discussion amongst staff? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget transfers and making appropriation changes.
A second. Seconded by Counselor. Motion moved by Counselor Wittrin, seconded by Counselor One. I got it right.
Okay, Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Wittrin.
Yes.
Counselor Glantz.
Yes.
And Counselor Rittma.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to agenda item number six, a resolution to unify the name of the North-South Road King, 257th Graham to 257th Avenue. And I believe we have a correct, well, Mr. Bernicker, we have Mr. Bernicker back again. But we also had a revised resolution. So it took out Southwest 257th, correct?
Correct.
And entered Southeast.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it's I think it's believe, I believe it's on section or paragraph two.
On number five.
Number five. It's on two as well, Southwest 257th Drive. Okay.
Okay. Sorry. So, thank you. This is this is the second council meeting to rename the street segment between Southeast Stark Street and Graham Avenue to 257 Avenue. And as we talked about last time, 257th currently exhibits a patchwork of street names. And this patchwork has led to inconsistencies in addressing and wayfinding. Adoption of this project will result in a more reliable street system, making travel easier for residents, businesses, and tourists, as well as critically important first responders. At the first meeting on June 13, several council members wanted to make sure that the affected properties were provided with a notice of change before it was voted on. To that end, staff mailed to the 36 property addresses that would be impacted a letter informing them of the change with the map. And so we made that correction and sent out the noticing. So that's the extent of my report.
Did we hear anything back from anybody?
We did hear back from some folks that were on the Graham Street, which is kind of telling because that's why we need to go through this to get it to a singular address to 257 Avenue.
Was there anybody that was?
No.
Coming to your office?
No.
Screaming, yelling?
No.
Kicking in the window?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, comments from council? Counselor Glantz.
Just so I'm clear, it's gonna be called 257.
Just so I'm clear, it's gonna be called two hundred and fifty-seventh Avenue, and there won't be a southeast or a southwest?
It'll be two fifty-seven.
Southeast.
So, two hundred and fifty-seven, yes, southeast two hundred and fifty-seventh Avenue.
The entire stretch.
Correct.
That confusion came because in that resolution, it states southwest two fifty-seventh, and so that was just a typo in the resolution, so we got a revised draft of that. Mr. Travis Holton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick clarification there. The the prefix will be based on the the normal quadrant system of the city, so this passes through one of those dividing lines. So there there is not gonna be one prefix for the entire stretch. It'll it will have the same prefix assigned to other roads in that quadrant.
And that dividing line is Columbia River Highway?
Correct. The dividing lines in Troutdale for our quads are Columbia River Highway and Buxton slash Troutdale Road. So Columbia River Highway is north-south. Buxton Troutdale Road is east-west.
So what are the two variations?
You will have, let me think about this for a second. You will have northwest and southwest.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Council Rittma.
I just wanted to be, you, Mr. Bernicker, the the comments from people on Graham Road were not negative. They, nobody objected to this change. That, is that what I understood? I didn't hear you say that.
Right. There were no, there were no people objecting to a counselor. There was a couple of envelopes sent back.
Okay. And and people, some people asked questions about it, maybe?
Did not hear anything, sir.
Oh, so a couple, a couple were returned undelivered, and nobody made any comment or question. All right. I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Council Glantz.
Did I just hear southwest and northwest, or is it southeast and northeast?
It will be southwest and northwest, because the entire stretch is west of Buxton slash Troutdale Road or the the projection thereof to the north.
Yeah, thank you.
Did I say the wrong thing earlier? I think I did. I did. That's my, that's my screw up. I apologize. Sarah, did you have your?
I was just gonna say, the the correction was for Stark Street. It was noted as southwest, but it should have been southeast. That's maybe where the confusion goes.
That's where the confusion is. I apologize. I added to that confusion.
On number, on number five.
On number five. That's my fault.
Paragraphs two and three of the resolution are correct when it says currently designated southwest two fifty-seventh between Stark and Columbia River Highway, and then north of Columbia River Highway, it's called northwest.
So when we get.
The resolution is correct.
When we get those minutes back, I would love for it to just be a solid black line as Mayor Lauer states, and then just read, like the CIA came through.
For summary minutes, don't worry.
Thank you, Council Glantz. Apologies. Anything else? Council White?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I appreciate Council Rittma's suggestion of contacting those addresses and staff's willingness to do it, because we had a big problem last time we did this with Cherry Park, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment, and we'll, and the evening soon after that, public comment is now open regarding a resolution to unify the name of the North-South Road Kane, two fifty-seventh Graham to two fifty-seventh Avenue. If you are on Zoom and wish to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers? Mr. Wilcox.
Well, Wilcox Troutdale. It's been way brief for about two weeks ago. Okay. It's all that my suggested edits were findings number two and number three were adopted. I also wanted to give extra credit to staff for correcting an error in number six that I had missed. Number six finding from two weeks ago had assigned Northwest Graham Road from Historic Highway to Northwest Funnies Road to ODOT. The jurisdiction map shows that section under Columbia County's authority. We have a sense in here about the correction on finding number five, which sounds like it's a concur already. Well, then they go on to further side here, actually. There's one other problem area on the two fifty-seventh quarter that I wanted to address. When Council White mentioned Cherry Park at the last meeting, I thought he would be referring to the disjointed nature of that road. Instead, he was talking about the difficulty in changing someone's address, which was discovered when the city attempted to renumber certain properties in Cherry Park. It was a very valid concern considering the public opposition in that instance. I would think that changing the street name entirely would be a bigger deal than changing the address number. In case of Cherry Park, there are two disconnected non-monetary sections. Let's say I'm a local, let's say I'm not a local resident. I have to call nine-one-one for an injury accident at two fifty-seventh and Cherry Park. Will dispatcher know whether I'm talking about the post office Cherry Park or the high school Cherry Park? There are also numerous segment streets throughout the city that could be problematic for first responders. There you go, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Appreciate it. Council White?
If I may.
Let me close public comment. Public comment is closed.
Yeah, we we did check with, I'm on the fire user board, and they said they have no, there's no issues responding to those addresses with the system they have on their trucks.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions for staff from council? All right. If not, I would entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion for a resolution to unify the name of the North-South Road Kane, two fifty-seventh Graham to two fifty-seventh Avenue.
I will second.
All right.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council One.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
Council Glantz.
Yes.
And Council Rittma.
Yes.
Unanimous. What is that? One, two, three, four for four tonight? Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bernicker.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good job, everybody. Agenda item number seven, staff communications. Mr. Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, next Tuesday, of course, is Fourth of July, and city offices will be closed a week from today. Number two, but that following Friday will be First Friday, July seventh. Please put it on your calendar. We should have another great event on July seventh for First Friday for July. And finally, it was mentioned earlier, and I mentioned it last time, but I got a chance to go out there the other day, is the fence is almost up for the off-leash dog park. It's gonna be kind of cool. They're very popular in other communities in metro area, and the fence is almost up, and so that's kind of nice to see that area, which had been pretty much unused by the citizens, will now be available for the citizens and their four-legged friends. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Council Communications, Councilor Caswell.
Can't get this button to work. Nothing for me.
All right, thank you. Who do I got? Council One.
I don't wanna make it like three times in a row where I don't say anything. I, I wanna say thank you to like the Parks Department, and I believe his name is, I think his name is Jason, that like mows all the time. I always see him at park. He's super friendly. He, I go walk in sunrise all the time. It's always a nice little, when we see each other, give each other a wave. He keeps the park clean, emptying the garbage cans, and I just feel like people who mow our parks and take care of them deserve a little, little thanks and appreciation as friendly faces for people who do on there. So I just wanted to, just wanted to say that.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Let's go to Council White.
Yeah, I noticed in the Gresham Outlook an article about for the first time ever a burn ban in Troutdale. They were talking about, you know, just like someone's patio fire pit. I was surprised, because it doesn't seem that dry. And where I live, the mosquitoes are so bad, it's really helpful to have a little patio fire.
Have the smoke.
Or you cannot be outside. That was my other comment. Is there, is there anything happening on the mosquito epidemic? Are they gonna spray or do any, anything at all?
I know that vector control, and I think Travis, if he's not on anymore, I will ask him to check with Multnomah County to find out what their plans are, because that's who's responsible for vector control.
Maybe we could follow up on that burn ban.
I do know that burn ban traps, I'll get you in just a second, that burn ban is county, countywide, so, yeah. It's not something that the city implemented. It's something the county implemented.
It's been very mild temperatures, really great, great summer.
Yeah. Mr. Holton, Public Works Director Travis Holton.
Yeah, to Council White's question, my recommendation would be to go on the Multnomah County Vector Control website. They have some bulletins posted there about what they're doing. I know they are applying some insecticides in certain areas that come along the slough and some other areas, select locations. I would also take this opportunity to tell you about their mosquito fish program. They offer free mosquito fish to folks that have ponds on their property. They cannot be connected in any surface waters, but if you have a pond that is isolated, you can get free mosquito fish from them, which eat mosquito larvae and help keep the population down. I've taken advantage of that service myself.
Thanks.
Yeah. Council Wittrin.
Other than the neighbors, the neighborhood, we're excited about First Friday again and looking forward to it. Great community event. Yeah, I can't wait. So that's all I have.
Council Glantz.
I got one item. Let's see if that's, got this postcard about streets, and it's like you can't park on a day, and you have to use a QR code in order to get more information. And I'm pretty sure there are at least two sitting councilors that don't have smartphones and wouldn't be able to do that, and there's a fair amount of our population that wouldn't be able to do that as well.
That's a good.
Trying to save money, I really do, and I'm just a little concerned about it. If I was not able to use a QR code and got this in the mail, I would be very concerned.
My flip phone broke, so.
Public Works Director, Mr. Travis Holton.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Council Glantz. Certainly normally, we would additionally put the URL for the webpage on there. That may have been an oversight this time. We'll have to take a look at that. But of course, you can always go to the city website and find that webpage. That's where that QR code is gonna take you. So we will certainly take a look at that and make sure we don't have that oversight again if that occurred. And folks can always call us, of course, as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at the very least, maybe the public work, maybe your office phone number, that would be, I think that would be appropriate.
Five oh three, six seven four, three three zero zero. Main desk.
It would be nice.
Project manager or myself.
Thank you, Travis. I appreciate it. Council Rittma, don't adjourn. I'm going last.
You are?
Yeah.
That was exactly what I intended to do. Because I have, I'll, I'll.
Okay, I was gonna say, happy Fourth of July. Be safe. Try not to use illegal fireworks. Use good fireworks. Enjoy the time with family and friends. Celebrate this country and enjoy First Friday.
I move readjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor White. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, everybody, we are done. Have a good night. Thank you very much for the discussion. Fantastic.